Let's call this meeting back to order.
Madam Chairman and Board of Murders, thank you for your indulgence along the opportunity to review these redlined versions.
And Mrs. Flaherty, you had wanted to pull this item. Was there anything that you wanted to add as a correction in addition to what Mr. Pierce?
Yes, on page four.
On page four.
Page four of Tony's or page four of the other one?
Page four.
Okay.
Okay, the record will reflect the meeting adjourned. We do not have a time. So it could be during two days later.
We will fix that. Right, Mr. Bloom? I'll go back. By the way, the video, and I want to commend Chris for whoever he retained to do the video, good quality. Audio is excellent and very helpful and easy to go back.
Well, we need to have these minutes approved for the August eighth meeting.
Yes, that's what I was asking. Possibly. It may possibly be. I mean, I'd always like to have them if they're asked for.
That's what I thought.
So I will, with that correction, I will insert the appropriate time and get them finalized and then get them...
So these are coming back?
No, they need to be approved today.
No, we need to approve them today.
The only addition would be the time.
Okay. So because we have a redlined version of these, let's go ahead and have a motion to accept the redlined corrected version that Mr. Pierce presented with the addition of adding the time of adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. And I'll call the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion cases.
Thank you.
All right. And we have B, which is contracts.
Just in case I ask.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes. The Engineering Service Tentra Tech. Okay, expires in May. I want to know when we're going out to bid for a new one.
We don't bid engineering.
Why not? We should bid everything.
The technical expression is Florida has what's called the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, or CCNA for short, and it's a qualifications-based process. It's called Request for Proposals, Request for Qualifications, and then the parties that submit proposals are ranked, and then the board authorizes negotiations as to dollars with the top-ranked firm. If that's unsuccessful, you go to the next-ranked firm. If that's unsuccessful, you go to the next-ranked firm. But the common term is bidding, but it is a Request for Qualifications, Request for Proposals. It's a little bit different. It's not dollar-based.
Okay, so it will go out for qualifications?
First of the year.
Chris is already on that, yeah.
Thank you. My next one would be the Financial Service. Is that going to end in March?
You're talking about the audit?
Yeah, no, I meant to talk about Financial Service Severn Trent.
Mr. Bloom.
When, will that go out? Does that go out to bid, or is that the same kind of one?
That's a bid. That can be. That can be however you wish. You can do Request for Proposals.
Yeah, we can do the RFP. We can look at continuing the contracts with ST for the financial services that they've been providing for us. And we could also work on developing that capability to take it in-house. And we just recently, and recently, I mean today, are advertising the position to replace April's job with emphasis on finance and accounting.
Okay. So, but if it had to go out, when would that go out?
November.
November. Thank you. All right.
It's about a 60-day process, 90 going to the board and then getting the person ready to take over.
That, Chris, make sure I understood that. The April position's going in November, but the question on Severn Trent's contract, that'll go to January, February?
We would start in November.
Get to? Okay.
With RFPs. And what I was speaking is replacing a position, and we're advertising that right now, to replace April's job with a finance accounting person.
I thought when we rewrote the contract with Severn Trent that we extended it. Am I incorrect in that?
We did, to 2018.
Okay. So you're looking at things that are expiring?
Next year, right. When they have to go out to bid, so that we have the plenty of time.
And, yeah, they're aware.
Because I don't want it to be that it comes two, like the month or two before, and we haven't done it, and we have to, you know?
Yeah.
We do the same thing with landscaping. It's up in March of 18, but we'll be working on that and getting the RFP out in November.
That's right. We are working on that. Okay, now, cleaning. Cleaning expires to 2018. How do you work on that one?
I haven't looked at that yet.
Oh, okay.
I will bring up, we are getting some quotes, too, to look at having a service take care of the soccer park and possibly even the pool, professional janitorial. We have usage on tournaments for those facilities and the kitchen, and even though the leagues are supposed to clean it up when they're done, they do not. And we have some safety concerns and health concerns with that. And we also don't have staff here on the weekends, so when you have a soccer tournament Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, by Sunday, the bathrooms are not in too pleasant of a shape. And also, instead of our staff going over and doing that, we will come up with what that cost is and add it to the league. If they want to use the facility for a tournament, they can also pay those costs for cleaning the sand and the bathrooms.
Good. Thank you. And the reason I'm asking is because we never did get anything from NTAC, and that just automatically got renewed. So that's why I want to make sure I have some specific dates.
And we had another vendor in this last weekend making a presentation for computer support services, and within two weeks, we'll have a third vendor coming in. So we have a few choices and prices to compare.
Margaret, now that Kathleen, you brought this up, then I think I'll go back now that I look at it. We've got Florida League of Cities that's on their, on our insurance that expires in about two months. I take it we're out, and we have a docket of needs for insurance services. Are we going out and bidding those services?
We had a representative in this past week from EGIS that we're sending all our information to, asset information, et cetera, and he will have a quote to us early August.
But I mean, will Florida League of Cities be getting the same opportunity?
Sure.
Are they, are there just basically two that provide this service?
Yes.
So it's one or the other?
Yep, just providers, and we're just looking at a couple of their options.
There was one I had circled, and the other one was the Soccer Association contracts that are, looks like they're coming up next month. Have we approached them about new contracts?
Yes, and I'd have to defer that to Mike. He's been talking to them.
Well, that's critical that we have that Bentley Electric deal, because there's 30,000 bucks, if it's correct, that's going to be possibly attached to that Soccer League on the next contract.
So will we hear about that at the next meeting, those contracts? Okay.
Give update on every one of them.
Go ahead, Mrs. Flaherty.
Okay. The lightning detector, okay. It said expires 8/31/2017?
Those contracts are being updated. Mike, go ahead.
Yes, we actually have the weather bug. We're going to have Comcast is coming in tomorrow to hook up the soccer complex, and then we have the gentleman that's coming in with a new system who's going to switch it over either tomorrow or early next week.
And we'll see that next time around?
No, I mean, we already have a contract with them. We were just, the contracts overlapped so that we could get the new system in place.
Okay.
And we would still have protection on the fields. But the new system should be operational. It's just, we've had some issues with Comcast that it's taken longer than a desired. Surprise.
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you very much, Mike. Okay. I think we covered them all, but I guess, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on this? So I'll entertain a motion to accept this report. My motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion cases. All righty. Policy regarding recreational use of the stormwater ponds.
Good afternoon. L. Harris with Gateway Services Natural Resources. This is coming to you as we had an issue brought to us back in late April and May, residents crossing private properties to access our ponds for recreational fishing. The residents did contact Lee County Sheriff's Department. Lee County Sheriff's Department did not feel like they had any authorization to trespass anybody from a utility or a maintenance easement owned by a government entity. So Mr. Pierce was kind enough to send us some memo, the memo here that was included in the agenda packet, that states that, you know, that is, these easements are either owned and fee simple, or they are basically dedicated to us by plaques and other instruments, but they do not grant the public access to these easements. So we brought this to the board to, that you could adopt a policy regarding recreational fishing and recreational use of our stormwater ponds. Basically, the policy states that we do not authorize any crossing of any private property to access any of the ponds in Gateway, that we would allow fishing only from the grassy banks in areas that is outright owned by Gateway. And it also outlines in, again, Tony's memo, the fact that these, this is a public utilities easement or a lake maintenance easement granted to us for the maintenance of the stormwater system. It is not granted to us as our private property to grant people access on. We do not grant people access. Now, knowing that we do not have trespass authority, this document would give the HOAs in the community something in their hand should they need to contact the Sheriff's Department for people trespassing over their property.
Would individual homeowners be able to?
They could fish from their backyard on their property.
I'm thinking more about if someone were to trespass on my property or my next-door neighbor on their property, and we called the Sheriff's Department.
Absolutely.
Would this document allow them to trespass people off of the property?
No, I get...
Because apparently, the issue was the sheriff didn't want to do anything.
I think the idea is hopefully to provide clarity to law enforcement that even though we are a public body, we have public assets, and we have easements in favor of the district for specific purposes to own, operate, maintain our water management system, that does not give the public as a whole the right to utilize the district's easements as a means of ingress and egress over someone else's property to get for fishing purposes. So I think that's the intent, is to try to clarify that for law enforcement. Somebody says, hey, I'm on public property. It's a district easement. Well, it's a governmental body, but they don't own the underlying title, and it's an easement to the district, not to you. So I think that was the hope.
I think this thing is admirable, but enforcement is going to be a joke. Here's why. Lee County ain't going to do squat. We've been dealing with him for six years on this, and the problem they run into is, he tells me on Common Area, I don't have a map, I don't know that it's an LME, I can't tell the difference between Common Area and an LME. They're not going to get in the middle of this. I think what we needed, though, is to have it for our protection more than anything, that if some property owner wants to take and call Lee County, they can do this and then reference this and on their property. But, well, I'll tell you right now, Lee County Sheriff's just told us, if you think we're going to go out there and get those, run those kids off fishing, we don't know if it's an LME or a Common Area. And in Gateway, there are so many places where they are common, it's unbelievable. So it's tough.
So if you provided the sheriff with a map, the community, that showed that it was an LME and not Common Area?
That map would be 40 pages long.
Not really.
Because all of the additions, I mean, I don't know what you would put it on.
I'm not, I'm just talking about for each individual HOA, is all I'm talking about, to leave it the responsibilities of the HOA.
And that's basically what our policy reflects in the attached policy, that individual property owners would be responsible to monitor and contact law enforcement authorities as necessary to report any kind of...
If we did anything that was of benefit, and I think PP is miles ahead of us, they have gone out and done what looks like the happy medium. They post signs on the common areas and say, you can fish here. That would be a heck of a lot easier.
We have that option.
That's a lot easier to do.
If the board would allow us to post signs where we have Common Area and we would allow people there, then we would follow that direction.
Mrs. Flaherty?
I'd like to motion to adopt this policy.
It's written well, but not endorsed.
Oh, well, it's on the agenda.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt the policy.
No, wait, wait, wait.
Any further discussion?
Bob just introduced a new deal. It's not in here. Did you hear it?
Yes.
This is not applicable to Pelican Preserve. That's not what it says.
That's correct. It's...
This is for Gateway.
Right. But they don't have to, I mean, it's going to be up to the individual HOAs to enforce or not enforce this, because all it's doing is creating a guideline that nobody's supposed to be fishing on the LME behind a personal house.
What I'm trying to get to is Lee County Sheriff's Committee, it doesn't say anything about not Pelican Preserve. So if you're going to omit Pelican Preserve, let's put it in here and say it doesn't include Pelican Preserve.
I don't think we should do that, because they use the city of Fort Myers anyway.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure, I don't know if Bob, if you had a chance to read, it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't sound like a conflict with what they do in Pelican Preserve. I'm not...
No, they have signs.
Bob Geppert, Pelican Preserve. For our fishing, our covenants specifically prohibit fishing in Pelican.
Anywhere?
Anywhere.
But that's a covenant issue.
That's a covenant issue. The practicality of it is, we reached agreement with WCI, and we also have a fishing club recently established, but we established areas in the community where the people can fish. They are designated by signs, and our pond provider makes sure that there's no litorals growing in these zones, so the fishermen can cast, et cetera. There is no prohibition against fishing behind your own home.
Correct. There is an India's either.
But you can't fish anyplace else. But I, it's a hot issue in the community. There are some people that don't like it at all, and that's why I didn't want to be part of this, because I don't want that thrown back at our face. We've been using this system for about eight years, and we just tell the people that don't like it. And the things they don't like, Margaret, are this. If there's a guy fishing on the golf course side, and the residence 130 feet away, they want to call the cops because the guy's over there. And we refuse to do that. We said, you know, if you have an issue, then it's a golf course issue. It's not our issue. Don't go looking to create trouble.
I understand that, and I don't see where this is in conflict with that, with how they're doing things in Pelican Preserve.
So she can't go on somebody else's property?
Right. I don't know whether this, this doesn't read to me that it's in conflict with what you want.
And we're looking at, though, Madam Chairman, it does appear to be focused more on the Gateway segment, because it does talk about the Gateway Golf and Country Club, as opposed to calling out any other golf course or facility.
Well, under fishing guidelines, it mentions golf courses, and that's plural, which would be Pelican Preserve also.
I'm sorry, go ahead. But step up to the, if you step up to the podium. So we need to have your name anywhere.
I signed in, but I didn't fill out the form. I'm sort of a little hard to hear. I live on a lake in Silver Lake County.
Your name?
Klaus U. Fontes. I live in Silver Lake. And I live on a lake that's all landlocked with homeowners. But we have a whole bunch of snowbirds that aren't here for six, seven, eight months a year. When I first moved in here, six years ago, I had a couple of kids just behind me in my yard, no problem. He's our friends, they've our friends. Then last year, I had two families with coolers and chairs, one snowbird. And my house is here, I have three feet from my bush from on the dock, and it goes right down into the lake.
Stocked lake.
So they're right there from sunrise to sunset, all last summer. And I'd ask them, you know, what did you, I'd let you go there. It just got out of control. So you let them go. So what they're doing now, they're saying, we can't stop us. They're going on their snowbird's property, and they go behind me, and they're saying, well, this is easement, this is utilities, it's easement. And the sheriff said at the last homeless association meeting, he can't do anything about it unless you put in your, in the Gateway CDC, then the snowbird can't give authorization to these people to be there for six, seven months while he's not here. You have to actually be there to give authorization to them. That's the only way we stop them.
This doesn't cover that.
It just got, got out of hand. It's like gypsies all in the back of the house, summer long.
May I have your name again, please?
Klaus U. Fontes. I signed in, sir.
You did sign in?
Yes, sir.
That's going to be helpful. But in what, in what community do you live?
Silver Lake. I know you guys don't like Silver Lake, but...
That's not true.
We love Silver Lake.
This should, this should allow...
For this, I lived in Michigan at the lakes, and we had, we had areas where the developer left beaches there where we could swim, and there's gravel, but lakes that were bigger than these here. And then the residents could go there and do what they want. But they, we had, it was everyone's lakes. We had seven lakes, and two more everybody could go in public place, because they couldn't go behind a homeowner. But we had five more landlocked, landlocked. The Michigan law says if you're landlocked, you can't just get in there as private, you know? And that's what they're doing now. They're saying, well, we can go by the snowbirds, and then it's not landlocked anymore, and we can go behind your yard, because that's a gateway. Because they said the sites all over says fish owned by Gateways or residents. And that's what they're going by. Well, lakes belong to Gateway, we can fish here.
That's the problem.
I'm swimming there in my swimming suit.
I understand your, I understand your issue. They shouldn't be swimming in the lakes. That's not...
No, he's on his linnai.
But here, I'm sorry, they're fishing, and they got coolers, the chairs. I mean, they're camping out. And I kid anything about it. They call the sheriff, they says, you have to have it as a law.
Tony, will this allow them to call the sheriff and have these people?
That's what he says.
Well, I guess... Tell the sheriff they're smoking grass.
I think what this does, it helps to clarify for law enforcement that any assertion that's made by someone that they can use the district easement as a means of ingress and egress over private property is wrong. That does not provide that authority or right. Now, whether or not, the difficulty would be, though, if the people who are fishing are going over his neighbor's property, and his neighbors don't care, you know, and they're not, and the neighbor would be the one that would need to complain, because they're the ones whose property...
If the neighbor wants to consent to them to fish, they fish in his yard only.
Right.
That's it. That's all we can do. Jim had a question.
Yes, Jim.
Jim Brand, Hampton Park, 10154 Avalon Lake. We had last summer multiple residents coming over from Silver Lake through private residences of Hampton Park going to go fish. And these boys would say, well, my grandma lives in Hampton Park, and she told me I could fish here. Well, they're going across private property. The private property owner videotaped it, pictures of them on their private property, calls the sheriff, show the pictures to the sheriff. Sheriff says, well, these are 15- and 16-year-old boys. You want me to arrest them for trespassing? That'll be on their record for life. The sheriff's deputy refused to file trespass charges. And he told me, Jim, there's no way a sheriff in Lee County is going to arrest anybody for trespassing to get to these lakes. The best thing you can do is put up no fishing signs. So if we have crap like what he described going on in Silver Lakes, and we have people trespassing, and the sheriff won't do anything about it, I think this is a mistake. I think we ought to say no fishing in Gateway, CDD lakes. The fish are poisonous. You can't eat them. You're supposed to release, right? You can't swim in those lakes, because they'll tell them what will happen to your legs and your feet. They'll disappear.
I think, I understand saying no fishing all the way for every HOA. We have very little issue with this in Stony Brook. Most people, most people fish only from the common areas at the one ends of the lake. From time to time, we have people, kids, you're right, it's usually teenagers that walk behind the properties. But you get a couple, they've been, they've been shooed off, and they're pretty good about not coming back. I don't want to blanket say nobody can fish in any of the lakes. I don't, I really don't want to. I don't, I don't... They are. That's true. They are. I agree with you, but...
The problem you run into is when I bought here in 1990, Westinghouse Gateway Community has made it clear these lakes are fishable.
Now, if the individual HOAs, if Silver Lakes wants to put no fishing signs up, and Hampton Park wants to make that there, that they don't want to let people fish in those ponds that are in their neighborhoods, I don't see any problem with that. But I don't want to do it blanket across the board.
And the question becomes, it becomes a different question. We have the ability to say, no trespassing on our lakes. The issue of regulating generally saying no fishing becomes a state issue. So I don't, anyways, that's why I think that this policy would be a good policy, given it to Mr. Geppert.
It's a good policy, but nobody will enforce it.
And Bob said that it's not inconsistent with, in conflict with Pelican Preserve. So it is appropriate, if the board wishes to have it across the board. But I think it is helpful to at least maybe have Trump and try to persuade law enforcement.
It's good for the HOAs.
Listen, this, this guy does not, can't use that utility easement. He can't use the drainage easement to access. That's not a right, because it's not a right to the public as a whole.
I would say this, if we do adopt this, we need to get it out to all the HOAs, because this would be a help for all the HOAs. And if they want to modify it, let them modify it.
I have a quick question before you further discuss or make any motions. Ed did bring up a point. Under the fishing guidelines, it does say privately-owned property or golf courses. Should I amend that and put that as Gateway Golf and Country Club?
Gateway Golf and Country Club is, it is, in our covenants, it is not allowed to fish on.
Well, that's what I mean. Should I amend this wording?
Oh, just to say?
To say that, and then that would be kind of leaving Pelican out? You're okay with it the way it is?
I'm okay with the way it is.
I'm going to call the vote.
Madam Chairman, may I make one comment?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean we still want to have a fishing tournament every year that CDD promotes, or, you know, do away with that?
Only on Common Area.
Is that where they fish, Common Areas in those tournaments?
Yes. No, they are only allowed to fish in the junior fishing tournament, which is strictly for children that are 15 and under, because we do not, we don't police for fishing licenses, which they are required to have if they're over age 16 or over. We hold that fishing challenge on Gateway-owned property beside the Gateway Pool, and they have limitations of where they can go around that pond to fish.
But it is the LME.
We put up a barrier. We limit them, and we do not allow them to go or go around unoccupied property.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Difficult challenge in creating this.
All right. And the next is Request for Retainage Water Meter Replacement Project. I know you'd like to start with this, Ed.
I'm so flabbergasted with the way this thing was so ineptly ran, but I have found that I don't feel I can put my finger on anything that's going to stick to get us out of the mess we're in. The only thing I would say is that I've seen the numbers. I agree with Tyler's calculations and everything. I believe that is the best reconciliation of what the dollar value is that is owed to them. The only thing I've got is that the certificate of substantial completion needs to have a date to be selected. And as I read the contract, they were to provide the audit to us no later than September 1st of 2016. And then as I also read the contract, I believe they had either 14 or 30 days to complete the punch list as identified in the audit. So if I take, what did I say, September 1st as the date the audit was delivered, the last day that it could be delivered, and then either add 14 or 30, I would say that the date of the substantial, or the certificate of substantial completion should either say September 15th, 2016, or September 30th, 2016.
As opposed to August 17th?
That's when it's going to expire. Yeah, no, it should... No, I think, Bill, it says up at the top, it says right-hand corner, May, in the one I read. Said May.
I have a concern of why would we post date something when this sets off the clock for our warning?
Very good question. It is what we supposedly inherited when we signed Amendment Number One to the contract.
I disagree with that.
Are we sure about that?
That's what they said in the meeting, and I had nothing to prove otherwise. I sure as hell don't like it, but I don't have anything to the contrary. We have never done a punch list.
But Amendment Number One was solely for the purposes of saying we're changing out a subcontractor, and we will buy meters from them.
No, I did the audit, Tony. It does, does do the audit. And the inference, and the inference is, the audit is a punch list. That's the inference of the letter, or the amendment. You don't have to talk much to convince me to change my mind. My deal is, I didn't have anything to support it. My deal is, I didn't have anything to support it. And none, staff couldn't produce it, because nobody was here. It's, it, it's a mess. It's an absolute mess.
What are about, what are these dates in here that, like, the subcontractor's final payment affidavit, that it's dated April twelve of 2017?
Well, we've been arguing that for the last four months on the, the issues. Their contention...
I mean, if we're willing to release the money, because we're saying that substantially the work has been completed...
Well, it, it gets more complicated than that. By definition, a certificate of substantial completion starts a warranty clock.
Right.
That's typical, one year. Our problem is, if we put and date this thing on or about September first, fourteenth, thirtieth, as recognizing that audit as the punch list, they're still responsible for warranty work under the contract up till three hundred and sixty-five days later. Now, that's got ramifications. And the ramification is, warranty is inclusive of labor and materials. They're not doing labor. And they're falling back on the contract that this board signed with them, that the, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, the service agreement, warranty agreement with Zennar, not Fortaline, proceeds and is more powerful, stronger than the certificate of substantial completion.
Chris, I'm, I'm going to ask you to hear from you. Why wouldn't we date this? Why would we backdate this and give them an out on this warning?
That was, their request and their position is that when the audit was complete and repairs made, that that should by contract be the date of substantial completion. And as I said, Fortaline requested that. And there was a discussion, Mr. Tinkell, myself, and several members of their staff and Zennar staff to that. And that, that was their position, that substantial completion was done. When the audit, they came in and then made the repairs according to the audit.
Now, we stopped using Fortaline because we weren't happy with them.
Severtritt.
Which is the sub to Fortaline. Severtritt.
Yeah, I understand that, but Fortaline is, we weren't happy with their work?
No. Severtritt's work is who we weren't happy with.
The installers, that was their sub consultant. And they did come back and perform that audit and did the repairs, of course, at their own costs with their own staff over a couple-month period. And we have those audit reports, and they did make the repairs. And their position, we came in, we checked everything that was bad, we repaired everything that was bad, we are substantially complete.
And is that correct? Are you in agreement with that?
That's not really a fair question. He wasn't here...
I don't have the historical knowledge and, you know, the involvement, I'm just on the tail end of it.
Yeah, I understand.
And just from what I read from the contract, I have to defer to the board attorney.
Are we, how, we have eight more...
Years to install?
Yeah.
Well, now, that's, that's another issue.
I know.
This contract, this amendment, as I read it and as I heard them speak, when we crossed that line and terminated, and we took over those last eighty, ninety, hundred meters, whatever it was, and we went with US, that drew the line in the sand as to far as their liability on the contract relative to labor. They still are covering us on the material side through the, either the, this warranty and/or the extended warranty. But the question comes up is that if between now and whatever the date is, something is wrong with these meters, we have heretofore, ever since this contract's been going, is, which is just ridiculous, we've been doing the labor. They furnish the material, but we do the labor. And that is not standard construction language at all.
Madam Chairman, I'd like a chance to get in here someplace if I may.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Members of the board, I just reread this afternoon an eighteen-page trias that Mr. Tinkell put together some six or seven, eight months ago. While I didn't agree with everything that was in that specifically, that all of the business about conflict interest, being as it may, it was a pretty darn good report. And I certainly don't want to embarrass Mr. Tinkell by saying why, a few months later, he's changing his position a hundred and eighty degrees from saying, Fortaline owes us a hundred grand, to where it is today. I'm not going to embarrass you by saying that.
Bill, I, I totally agree what you said, and I'm embarrassed to do what I'm doing. But I was also embarrassed to find that our staff, our management staff, sat there and allowed this to go on.
At the time. Say, at the time.
At the time, at the time, at the time. Our record-keeping was abominable, and the attorney advises me that we have no way to go after them and stick them with the hundred thousand that I calculated on the basis that we don't maintain time sheets. That's the problem.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into it with the attorney at the moment, anyway. Except to say, I know for a fact, because I was the chairman of this board for two years while this was going on, and I know that our attorney spent a lot of time on this, because he and I spent a lot of time on it by phone. I suspect that he kept track of all his hours. I also know that we paid Tetra Tech some additional funds to manage this when we found it was out of control.
After the fact.
This project was advertised, and I have it in writing, if you want to see it...
Turkey.
As a turnkey project.
I totally agree.
Now, it seems that there are those who want to pay for a line that's retaining to move on to other things. I'm not one of them. Fortaline was supposed to produce a turnkey project. What they produced was everything but. The, I think the worst project I've ever been involved in in forty-some years. The problems are numerous and require much time and effort on our staff and engineers and attorneys.
Bill, the only, the only thing, I, I echo everything you say. The only problem is, our attorney was, gave me the advice that we didn't have a leg to stand on.
Well, he hasn't talked to me, he talked to you. That's another thing. I don't know where you get your portfolio to run all of this stuff by yourself. And so come and tell us what everything has happened or is going to happen.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
What?
That's why I'm bringing it up for discussion.
Mr. Guy, my name is Keith Allen of Fortaline Water Works. Unfortunately, I have to disagree with about everything you just said. Fortaline did perform and go through the contract, and there's many things that are not to your, that you do not understand nor were a part of, nor were in conversations that we brought up, particularly the conflict of interest when we found out that Severtritt also did services for Gateway. We brought that up before we started, and there's a lot of things that were thought of. But we also, in August, we performed at our own expense a quite detailed, I'm talking about very detailed audit, that we went through, thousands of meters and everything else, ones that were not right, we fixed them, we paid, then we spent well in excess, over thirty-some thousand dollars trying to do this, to complete the contract so we could be free of that part. Because we didn't want anything else to do with Severtritt or the fact that Severtritt also worked with you guys. And at that time, it was accepted. Everything was working at that time like it was supposed to, according to contract. Now, to say you're not going to pay us that money that we're owed, I don't agree with that a hundred percent. Not even the least little bit.
And for me, it's not, it's not so much an issue of, of the money, it's going back. What we're doing is, it's almost like we're saying, if we write this agreement backdated as of August thirty-first, then we have no warning. We've already used up any warning that we might have had for any issues.
That's what we did to audit. You just said something we had to contract. You had all this time to dispute the other contract that we had amendment to. We provide you a full, completed audit at that time. Now that everything else has been installed, plus you have a twenty-year warranty. On anything that's installed, it's not right, we send and replace it for free.
Are we going to, do we have to sit here and listen to this, or are we going to talk about it more than...
We can, but, so, any, any issues, Chris, are you comfortable with the any issues that we might have are covered under the twenty-year warning?
It's, it's, the warranty is solid, they've been replacing the equipment, and it's a hundred percent equipment replacement for the first ten years, and then it's upgraded in the effective equipment that we found is a lot from the earliest installations that were done. The failure rates are still a little higher than industry standards, but the system seems to be functioning well.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I heard Tim, look, we, we do meters all across, oh, this, many estates. I mean, we're a one-point-seven-billion-dollar company. We want the customers that we sell meters to, to be satisfied. And we, who we had and other issues come up, we've tried to address them and, and move forward. And we feel like we've met our obligation, but we do expect our money.
I understand. Thank you. Did you have anything, Mrs. Flaherty?
Oh, yes, Flaherty. Okay, go ahead. We don't have the, the contract, the original contract, because it was not in here. I looked.
Yeah, we have a copy of it.
It's not in the agenda.
No, it's not in the agenda.
Nor is the detail on the amendment.
Right. So I don't know why it wasn't put in here, so that we could look at it. The second thing is, talking about dates, how can you postdate something when you already have something here for May? It doesn't seem that you can postdate if you have something already in May. It would be some kind of legality that's...
That was my question, Kathleen. The, somebody put on the top of the certificate, May, and I don't think there's a justification for May. The contract amendment number one, paragraph two, very clearly states that the audit, if you're accepting the audit as a punch list, had to be delivered by September first, and then they gave them fourteen or thirty days to do, thirteen days to do the work. So I could argue very easily that the date of certificate substantial completion was indeed September fourteenth, 2016.
And I can argue very substantially that we wouldn't have needed an audit if the job had been halfway done right the first time.
And I would agree with you.
Yes. Mrs. Flaherty, please continue.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay. I'm used to being skipped. I don't see a September date, I see a December twenty-ninth date.
You've got to go to amendment number one of the contract.
I don't think we have that in our books.
We don't have that in the books.
That's not in the book.
That's what I'm saying. No.
Yeah, we, that's why I asked. Okay, my other concern?
You know, maybe if I read this, this will clarify it. I think it'll clarify it for everybody. This is from the contract amendment. "After delivery of the audit to the owner by no later than September first, 2016, owner shall have twenty calendays to review the audit and accept or reject the audit in whole or in part. As I understand it, we accepted it. If the owner rejects the audit, the owner shall so notify in writing, the contractor has fourteen days to cure and correct to suit the situation of the owner. All errors, deficiencies, blah, 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 blah." So basically, we accepted the audit, as I understand it.
That's, but that's, that totally ignores the fact that we were spending hundreds of hours and dollars to get to that point.
Bill, I'm on your side. I understand. I just ran into a brick wall, and I think what we need to do is to have counsel tell us as the availability of, of going after the deal, because my, my whole thing was money. We spent, and I totally agree with you, I authored that document, and I interviewed our employees. We spent the equivalent of about a hundred thousand dollars in man-hours doing work that should have been done by the contractor. And my deal was, is to recoup that, but I was told we couldn't.
Well...
Hold on, let me... Could I finish my questions? Thank you. Is there a key, like, that was supposed to be installed? That, that he was...
Turnkey?
The turnkey. So therefore, they did not fulfill the requirements, if they didn't do what was supposed to be in the contract. Okay? So I'm just, I'm reading this, I'm...
Turnkey is an expression.
I don't know, because I don't, I wasn't here. Also...
Turnkey means it's easy, transfers from one person to the next entity without any difficulty.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My second thing is, was it on the agenda to accept the audit in August or September? If it wasn't on the agenda, or...
Nobody was, nobody was here. That's the problem.
I don't recall if it was on the...
But we do, can go back and look at the agendas and the, sorry, minutes, and see if it was accepted or...
He may remember.
If you would like, I can answer that part of the question. Zennar and Fortaline both came in here and made a presentation to the board on the findings of those audits.
And I remember that.
I wasn't on the board then, so...
Understandable, but that they did...
Was that January seventeen or December sixteen, I think?
No, sir, it was back in, it was August, it was in August of 2016. I don't remember the exact date. August 2016.
I remember them coming in.
But was there, but was it on the agenda, and was there a motion to accept that? That's what I'm asking. So we need to go back to those minutes to see if it was on the agenda and accepted. I have a book.
That, that I don't know.
I remember them coming in.
Oh, yeah, I remember them coming in.
But I don't, I, you know...
And I'm sure it was on the agenda if they came in.
Did the town, did we accept it all?
It had to be.
I believe, it's my recollection, that staff indicated via email that they accepted the audit. I also believe they had up to twenty days per the contract amendment to accept it or reject it. So I guess you can ask your attorney, but I guess that's a legal question, but I'm pretty sure the staff accepted it via email.
So now I'm going to turn to our attorney. What is your recommendation?
Well, I think, I'd have to go, I'm going back to the whole history, because it's very limited. I guess a couple of things is, the substantial completion is ninety percent. And so that's what this is, you know, that's, and so we're talking about final completion now, I think that's what they're requesting. And substantial completion is defined, that point which the work described in the task order, which, the project, is at a level of completion and strict compliance with this contract and task order, such that the owner can enjoy the beneficial use or occupancy and can use or operate it in all respects for its intended purpose. And I think what I'm hearing is that that, that substantial completion as to that portion, ninety percent, was back in September. Now, the question is, is there final completion to which they are entitled to payments, and can there be any offsets? There are a number of representations or assertions made as to staff spending an inordinate amount of time doing work out in the field. We're able to document about, I think, eleven thousand dollars' worth, I believe, is because, based upon some belief as to how often people went out, otherwise there was no detailed record-keeping, to my understanding. So arguably, that could be an offset. I don't have that exact number. I have, well, I have it in one of my, I take it back. It's about eleven thousand forty dollars possibly, and that was Kenny's workbook, has description of the work he performed and dates he engaged in work. Approximately twenty hours a week from December fifteenth, 2015, to June fifteenth, 2016. And so estimating about eleven thousand forty dollars for Kenny's time, is what we understand. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other documentation of dates and times of hours they spent, other than they said they spent a lot of time. So that's the difficulty in that. So that, that number arguably could be asserted as a deduct or a credit or a charge against the remaining amounts due. And then the board needs to, again, make a determination, I think, whether or not, as of this state, when they're asking for a final payment, whether any portion of the work is defective or not in accordance with the requirements of the contract. And I think the primary issue is the meters that, to the extent that they are failing...
MIUs.
MIUs are failing. The meters appear to be fine. And Zennar has indicated they replaced the hardware, but no one is indicating that they were going and reinstall the MIU. And so that, as it costs the district, is apparently being asked by Fortaline or everyone else to absorb.
That's in the, that's in the warranty, that the labor is not included.
Yeah. But then I guess from the standpoint, again, whether or not that the quality of all the But then I guess from the standpoint, again, whether or not that the quality of all the work is defective or not in accordance with the contract, and the contractor is Ford Line.
And, but as the MIUs have failed, we've gotten those replaced. Isn't that correct?
The parts.
Parts, yeah.
So was it our staff that's going out and replacing them, or are they coming out and replacing?
Our staff takes them out, our staff mails them, and our staff installs the returned new meter or MIU.
So, is, but that's what you're saying? That's what we agreed to in the contract?
It's what we agreed, it's what we agreed to in the warranty.
In the warranty, well...
Right, but then I guess from the standpoint, though, the question is, is the quality of the work defective or not in accordance with the requirements of the contract? And is the contractor's work and the contractor is Ford Line? So arguably, it can be made that as to those MIUs that fail, yes, the product itself is under warranty with the Zennar, but is the quality of the work defective and not in accordance with the requirements of the contract? And that's a Ford Line issue. And do we have an indication how many more may fail in the next year? Or how many failed within, from September of 2016 to today? Do we have that number?
I think Tyler's report makes a estimate, what, 6%? And the national average is 1.5%.
Do we have records of how many we replaced at all? Kenny's got those records, did they have man-hours or hours?
The number two date.
And how many is that, Kenny? And I guess the question is... It's a quality of the work issue, yes. As well as a material, as well as a material. You're the contractor. But it says, the quality of a, quality of a portion or all of the contractor's work being defective or not being in accordance with the requirements of the contract.
The MIU is failing and they're replacing it. That is not quality of work, that is the material.
We can disagree about that.
We can argue a lot, and I also disagree with the $11,000. But Ford Line is not positioned for the deduct. I mean, every, every penny you want to sit there and state that you had to spend, I go through and my news document after document of the money.
Can you adjust, can you go up to the podium so we can make sure it's all on the record?
We're, we're trying to be reasonable and do what's right. And we have done the audit, it's been accepted, and we'll continue with the warranty and do what's right. But when you're talking about quality of work because the MIU is failing, that's not quality of work. That's, that's the material.
Well, once again...
I mean, it's installed correctly.
I guess that's the question.
The MIU is failing. That is, that is a warranty issue.
I guess that's the question, is it installed correctly in all instances where MIUs have failed?
Well, it is at this moment, in my opinion, and what's been done all across the state and everywhere else. And also, we can also argue the definition of turnkey as well.
And I guess one other question is, how, do you have the documentation as how much you've expended to date? You said you've incurred expenses, and what were those for?
If I need to produce them, I will. I'm hoping that we will not have to spend any more time on any of this and that this board will see to pay the money as to the Ford Line.
I guess I'm just questioning, you made an assertion without, a bare assertion, I'll call it. And I think it's always helpful to have the documentation or the indication of what you believe that number is and what that work was for.
I'm, at this point in time, I'm going to say we either need to vote this up or down tonight or we need to push it to another meeting because we want additional information.
Move the table until the next meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to table this to the next meeting so we can get...
Discussion?
More information.
Okay, what, what are we looking for from information?
I think the board wants to have the contracts and amendments in front of them.
The contracts and amendments and a statement from the attorney, if you will, please, as to how much he spent on this thing, and anything else that we can get from our staff as to how much they spent on doing this quote, quote, unquote, turnkey operation.
Because you were privy to the contract and the amendments and the dates, and I kept trying to justify those dates with what I had, and I, and I kept trying to figure out why we were going so far back to backdating it, so...
Move the table is on the, is on the floor and it's a preferential motion and needs to be voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I understand that, you know, you were hoping for an answer tonight, but there should be one in two weeks, which is when the next meeting, we just didn't have enough information to make the vote tonight. Give us some. I just asked for a little bit more patience. Thank you.
In all that information, could we have the minutes where they came in?
Direct that to our district manager.
I would like the minutes put in our book, the one they came in to. Thank you.
You have it.
Mr. Bloom, you are up.
Yeah, and she...
I think there's a song like that. Shake it off.
Okay, good evening. Steven Bloom, Severn Trent. Kind of moving on here. I'll start with a recap of where we are in the budget process. As we, as we kind of went through, we, the board approved the high watermark already. We've already had a discussion on the general fund in terms of some items that the board had questioned. Today's topic is the utility fund. And then the next meeting, my thoughts were we would have a discussion on the capital projects as well as a final follow-up on basically any of the other funds or questions we talked about. And then the following meeting would be, we still have, you know, the public, though, hearing would be on the 17th. So we've got, this meeting to have our discussion on the enterprise fund. The next meeting will be mostly centered on the capital projects, and we can go, kind of go through, like we've done in the past, project by project, and have a, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down type of approach to it, as well as a follow-up on the items either discussed today or the general fund, just to kind of close the loop on those before we head into the public hearing. So that's kind of the thought process.
And I'm sorry, before we move on, I just want to say thank you, because this is so much more methodical than the way that we ever used to do it years ago, when we'd just do the whole thing all the ti, all at once, and it was, it was just really, this is so much better. I think we really get a chance to really look at our budget and scrutinize it. So thank, I just wanted to say thank you.
Before he gets started in this, some record-keeping, at least for me, and I imagine Kathleen doesn't understand it either, we've collected six 700 ERCs to the tune of 1797 over the past four or five years, which generated about $1.2 million in cash. That money is dedicated predominantly for capital. It was supposed to have been allocated back to the water sewer and irrigation utilities in the manner in which it was sent out. Right now, as I understand it, and that's why I wanted Steve to tell us, where is that $1.2 million? And then the second part of it is, is that if it is indeed capital, which I believe it is, how and where in this budget are we allocating underwater, under sewer, and under irrigation? The capital needs that we've got projected less that their share of that $1.2 million.
Okay, I'll try and answer those in some...
Because I think that's critical to create the enterprise fund.
They have not traditionally been split. I mean, that, that would be the, our next step is to go back through and split those out by utility. They are all in the utility fund, and to answer your question, yes, they are used to fund, that's what's used to fund the capital projects.
Where, where can we see that number, Stephen? Where is that $1.2 million showing is at, as, I'm not going to, not going to say hiding, but where is it hiding?
Yeah, yeah. You're not going to be able to see it in, in the budget. You'll be able to see it in the financials, because you'll have your, your fund balances and your retained earnings, and you'll see it's all in there. Nothing has been, and again, I'm going to make sure I'm clear, nothing has been split out into a separate bank account, nothing has been, per se, reserved against any of the separate utilities. But all of the, all of the connection fees has been maintained within the utility fund. And then, you know, upon direction, the amount of money has been moved to the 301, which is the capital fund.
So it'd be very easy to go back to the original 2013, 2014 report that allocated the 1797 into three components.
Right.
Prorate that and then assign that to each of the three accounts. That would be easy to do.
Yeah.
Cut out. I know you've got something in your mind, but it is way beyond me. What in the world are you doing?
I was trying, I was trying to tell you what I was doing. We've got capital needs coming up here. Huge, huge capital needs coming up here.
Needs, okay.
Needs, needs.
Replacing failing infrastructure.
Before we start talking about funding and how we're going to do a budget, I think we need to know what we've got. And right now, I don't know what we've got. We have X amount of money setting in reserve for capital. We also have staff, I know Kenny has worked on it, Mike's worked on it, capital needs in this utility that we need to talk about, water sewer irrigation. I don't know how we can talk about a budget until we know, are we cash-rich or are we cash-poor?
Okay.
And I don't know.
Well, two things, and I think your question leads right into the capital discussion we have in our next meeting, and I think the easy solution is for me to include in there a schedule.
So we could pull that off.
Yeah, that shows that.
Okay.
But the bigger picture, I think, and I want to put some words in your mouth here for a second, is the idea of taking the utility fund to the next level, which is splitting out each of the utilities to see how they're performing.
Yes.
Right now, you look at it as one great big utility fund. But the next step and why you would do this would be to split out each of the utilities into a separate, I mean, not necessarily a sub-statement, for lack of a better word, so you could see how does water do, how does sewer do, and then take a look at it each separately as you try and fund future infrastructure.
That I understand and agree with, but remember the conversation we had earlier in that we need a rate study pronto.
Yes.
If we are going to make any sense.
Staff is preparing an RFP.
That's correct.
An RFP is being prepared, correct? Is that so?
It is.
Yes.
Or a rate study similar to what Burton has done for us the last few times?
Much better than Burton did.
It's an RFP to find somebody to do the rate study.
Yeah.
Okay, understand it. Well, what I'm seeing is, I'm delighted to find out that RFP is being prepared, because we darn near need, darn near need, darn well need a rate study in adjun, in conjunction with the splitting out of these utility items. Thank you very much.
And we agree.
And as a matter of fact, your, your last rate study, the last set of rates are effective January 1, 2018. So it's getting, it's triggered by many different things, so...
Correct.
Okay, so I, hopefully I answered all of your questions. So, so with that in mind, yes, we will have those discussions. We'll take a look at the different reserves, because we, you know, the enterprise fund is one, and then we have to have continuing discussions on the general fund as well, so you can kind of see what the effect of, of the capital projects will be on that. But...
The only other thing, Steve, is on the administrative services, and I don't know if either Chuck or Chris has gotten with you, but you're going to be looking at a pretty penny for that rate consulting fee. Do we have it budgeted in here?
Yes, we do. $50,000.
How much?
$50,000.
Okay, that's a pretty penny.
Say again?
That's a pretty penny.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay.
So the utility fund starts on page 55. I have it's, it's already up on there. And again, we can, I'll kind of give you a summary on how this was put together, and then we can kind of go through it in terms of either line by line or, or questions. Obviously, you can see on the utility revenue, you've got water sewer, irrigation, and again, your, your 2018 budget was increased. Again, if you look at the trend, you've had an increase pretty much each year, so we followed suit with that. Again, this will be the last year for the, the rate increases, so that will obviously have to get done. Also have in here penalties, which I left at around $20,000, which has been actually going down from, you can see, 16 was about $30,000, and now I'm projecting about $18,000. Connection fees is, is another item. I'm usually pretty conservative, very conservative if you look at some of the past years on the connection fees, not knowing what will be done for next year. I did increase it about $50,000 from your current year budget, but again, that's still, I mean, in 2016, you had $746,000 in connection fees.
Stephen, on that one, I'd, I'd like to see that broken down into three things, because there's three distinct fees that we're billing people for. Meter fees, which is all over the place of, I, and Chuck can't figure out even how it's written. It does not make sense. We have an availability fee, and we have a connection fee. I'd like to see all three of those separately identified, because I could argue that two of them are purely to capital, not to operating.
Operations, yeah.
Yes.
And that's traditionally what connection fees are for across the boards.
And so is our accrued capacity fee.
A year or two ago, we, I'm going to show my ignorance here if I'm not careful. We stopped collecting connection fees for the county, and now they're being paid directly to the county.
No, no.
Is that not correct?
We're still collecting them and we're passing them through.
We, we, we all agreed on the agreement sent to the county, and they sort of sat on it along with other amendments.
I'm sorry, what are you saying?
We, we drafted an agreement that would effectuate that and passed it along to the county, and they said they were favorably inclined to it, sort of, and then we never really heard back. We never got it back from them finalized. None of our amendments have ever been finalized with the county.
Long story short, long story short...
Is that the same county that I've been talking and asking things about? Maybe it's...
Bill, long story, long story short, we didn't do it.
Yeah.
We are still collecting the money.
Sure, I'm delighted to hear that. No, I'm undelighted to hear that, but I'm glad to know. I thought we'd gone way by that.
Yeah, I don't think I ever thought about that.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you all.
So there's, in other words, it's just another one of the long lines of things that we thought we did that we now find out we really didn't.
Yep.
Well, I went back in after Michael Tish asked about some amendments with Lee County. I went back in from '09, '12, '14, '15, '16, drafted amendments that, I mean, I've got a roomful of drafts, so it's interesting.
It is pure, unadulterated mismanagement to the highest degree.
Please continue.
Okay.
So I budgeted $300,000. You're projecting about $370,000 for this year, and that, you know, is basically still a projection. So I think we're in good shape with where we're budgeting for that. Overall, the total revenues, a little bit under $4.8 million, and you're projecting to be a little bit under $4.7.
Stephen, just to correct something, make sure the board knows, this connection fee, going back to it one more time, if you recall, we somehow got entrapped into an agreement with a credit with WCI. Do you recall that?
I do, indeed.
I have learned...
With, with WCI?
With WCI. It's about $1.2 million a year, year and a half ago. As I under...
That was with Lee County, wasn't it?
No, WCI. That was the credit, the infamous hidden credit.
Yeah.
And we thought that there was a question of when old WCI died, this died with it. Remember that argument?
Yeah.
Well, it didn't die. But the good news is, according to WCI, the credit has been totally absorbed. So every connection fee that comes in now, and I don't know if this has been for the last month, two months, that money is now coming to us and not going against the WCI credit.
That's part of the general fund's balance sheet, isn't it?
No, it better not be. It's got to be utility.
No, it would be with the, it would be with the utility.
Be the enterprise fund.
Yeah.
Because that's utility.
So every one of these, we've got about 1,1200 ERCs to go to build out Gateway. At the current 1797, what that says is that all 1797 per comes to us. WCI's got no more credits. And that heretofore has been taken out.
How was it, did you find, know about all these things?
I ask.
Nobody else knows about them.
I ask. Because I don't trust what's been done here in the past. It's that simple.
Yeah, the, if our credits go to Pelican...
I know, but did we ever sell them all?
No, there's still some to sale.
Just wondered. It's just, when I heard credit, it reminded me of those.
It's a bad word. So anyway, the good news is, everything from here forward, we don't have to pay WCI or offset.
I guess, we weren't really paying them. They were submitting application for service and not pay the district connection fee and say credit.
I thought you said they pay.
Yeah, no, we weren't paying them.
That's a big difference. It's like a distinction without a difference.
Go on, okay. Sorry, just want to make sure they understood, we're not, we're out of the credit business now.
Stephen's enjoying listening to all this.
You're right.
I, I'm just bringing it up, because I want to make sure that we collect... I, I'm just bringing it up because I want to make sure that we collect what is due us, and we don't pay them anymore.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Or we let them ali-ali-all in free.
Okay, Stephen, I know you have more to share with the board, so.
I do.
Oh, thank you.
Now, I'll start with expenses here. I'll just give you, go briefly through the different departments. The administrative services department and the operational admin services department, those two are the utility funds, allocation of the general type services for the district. Again, that gets split with the general fund and the Pelican Preserve Fund. So those are basically similar line items that you have seen with the other funds within the budget. We have put in there some increases for contingency type things like insurance, and then you'll also see some of the effect, both positive and negative in terms of some of the staffing changes that were made in terms of the allocations and the new positions and where they're sitting. You can see, as a matter of fact, operational admin services, payroll services down ninety-two for salaries and...
Chris, can you pan that up? We can't see it.
And on the, the other end of that, and when you keep going down, and we can come back to some, to more details on this one, finish up kind of a quick overview for you. As you go down further into the next page, now we're on the utility services department, which is the core department for the utility fund, including obviously, you know, staffing. You'll see here, you know, postage for billing, a lot of the billing items, and then it goes into quite a bit of the repair, general maintenance, lift station, irrigation pump. And then at the tail end of that department, you'll see the, both the Lee County agreement obligation of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, as well as the water and wastewater costs for Lee County.
Lee County obligation. How much longer are we paying that fourteen thousand a month? When does that contract terminate?
I'd have to check on that. Make a note here.
And then the other one for Chris, or are you, as I understand it, the, the amount, the salaries that employees are being paid are not in the current budget at the current rate. How are we addressing that? And does it, does this include the three percent projection that we...
This includes a three projec, three percent wage increase or, you know, however that would be.
At their current rate?
At their current rate, I think, with the exception of like two or three positions. Again, I've already updated the, the version that you'll get next meetings with those couple. It really wasn't that large, but I've already updated the main file. I didn't, again, I have not made any significant changes. I didn't want to start moving numbers around in these files. These is, this, wanted to keep this file consistent.
Yeah.
But yeah, that has already been taken into account.
And that, please check on that hundred and seventy-two thousand.
I will.
Because that was done in 2003, and I can't picture that agreement. It's, it's, it's got to be getting close to expiring.
Agreement, or you mean the payment?
The payment.
Yeah.
I'd have to check.
That was a 2003 number, I know that. And we've been paying that fourteen thousand dollars every month out of the sewer account.
And then one thing I wanted to point out, the line, it's called reserve capital program.
Yeah.
That is kind of reserve, it's a reserve for future, kind of, future capital projects. It also is used to balance the budget. Everything else, you know, kind of falls down through this line item. There is nothing specific that's going to be spent on. There's no invoices or anything. It's kind of a general reserve. Ideally, when the rate study is complete, that number will go up.
Okay, if we talk, let's say next week, we talk about the capital, and just for instance, we come up that our capital need for 2018, and I'm not going to split them, I'm just going to say lump sum, water sewer and irrigation is a half a million dollars. Okay? Is a half a million. And we have connection fees next year that is three hundred thousand. Are you saying that number would be two hundred thousand? Because that's what it takes to balance?
No, I'm not saying that because you already have money in your capital project fund that you can use to fund some of that.
So then I guess my question is, how did you calculate that number?
This is intended to be for future projects beyond what you're already going to be budgeting for. In other words, if I have a checking account, it's got a million dollars in it, next year I'm going to spend a half a million dollars on projects. That means theoretically I've got a half a million dollars left. That number is intended to go into that checking account to increase it from a half a million to six hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay, so it's a running cash flow?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, again, there's a whole different way, different way of setting this up, and once we start splitting things and looking at, it changes, changes a lot of the equation.
And the reason I bring that up is, our sewer, as Kenny will point out to everybody, our sewer has got, is our Achilles heel. There is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars on sewer capital, hundreds of thousands. So we've got to get these separated because you can't charge people for water for something that's on sewer and vice versa.
And again, you, but you're going to want to do that once your rate study is done and adjusted.
Correct.
Because you're right. If you try and do that now, then you're not going to have...
We just don't have the stuff.
It's not going to be correct.
We don't have the stuff to do it.
Okay, and if you, if you page down, the next section goes from operating down to debt service. So basically, now, if you, kind of as a reminder, there are two loans in the enterprise fund. One is the meter loan, and the second is the, it's a 2014 refunding of a 2003, which is a refunding of a nineteen eighty-nine bond, but it's basically the water and sewer infrastructure bond that's still left over.
I thought that was the fourteen thousand a month.
The fourteen to Lee County.
That's to Lee County for their...
But, but that's a debt. Why wouldn't it be under debt service?
That's, I don't think I'm...
That's debt service.
That's what they are charging the district for their type of debt service, but it's not pers, this section is just loans.
It's for us only.
Correct.
Okay, so the other is considered an operating debt, then, I take it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Per, maybe more of a contractual debt obligation with them.
Gotcha.
These are just the two pieces of debt that are just up for the district.
Gotcha.
And then again, it balances out. So without the debt service, I'm showing a three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar operating income that is used to pay the debt service, and within that, I'm showing a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of future reserve. So you're, you're approaching basically a half a million dollars of operating income that's being generated by this fund. And with that, we can kind of go, go through questions or comments.
So you just base, basically worked down and made it, made it a zero balance?
You want me to start down at this end?
Yes, to keep it clean.
Okay. I've been told to start down at this end.
I answered all mine, or got mine answered as we went through. I'm happy.
I did not have any either.
Did you have, you have nothing?
No, I do, but I figured, oh.
No, no, starting on this, yeah.
Okay, can we turn to page sixty, I go backwards. Eighty-five, no, sixty-five, I'm sorry, or page twenty-two, whichever version you want to look at.
Okay, that's the assessment summary.
Yes.
Okay, which page?
Sixty-five or twenty-two, whichever you're looking at.
The assessment summary.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
What's gate? One, two, three, four, gate?
Where's what?
Gate, G-A-T-E, gate.
Hold on one second.
Oh, right, it's probably supposed to be outside gate.
Yeah.
Because you've got townhomes and condos outside the gate.
Supposed to be Stony Brook.
It didn't wrap right.
This is EAU.
Outside the gate.
Yeah.
The EAU study?
Well, I, I, it's not, I just wanted to know.
It's just a typo.
Okay, well.
He'll correct it.
Thank you. All right, now we...
Yeah, that's Stony Brook outside gate.
Yeah.
Well, I just figured I'd ask.
Okay, I'll fix it.
All right, and now we can go back to page fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
Or page thirteen, whichever way you want to look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we on thirteen?
No.
Page fifteen.
All right, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
I guess it's fifty-eight in the budget, in the agenda meeting book and probably thirteen in the, of the document, so.
Yeah, it's fifty-six, fifty-six, I'm sorry.
Fifty-six.
I think it's fifty-six, yeah, that's it, fifty-six. Okay, since we were talking about meters, okay, it says meters and supply. If the meters are covered under our warranty, why do we need more meters? That's my question.
Because we're buying and in some cases replacing, but mostly those are meters for new install.
New construction.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. And Mr. Bloom answered my other questions earlier.
Okay.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you. Stephen, I only have one, and that's on the revenue side, where for instance, you're estimating one million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand for water revenue for next fiscal year. Is that a, a calculation of the additional homes that have already been built, say, in Hampton Park or wherever, or is it just a kind of a guess of what the revenue is going to be?
Well, it, it's actually split into two pieces. It's, it's about four percent is the, is the increase that I put in there, but I've, I've kind of split it into two pieces. Two and a half percent is for, roughly for what I would consider to be rate increase.
D?
Rate increase, meaning your rates are going up January 1, and so I have put in, you know, an increase for that.
Okay.
And then the, the second part of it would be more of what I would call a quantity increase. But again, it's not anything specific or exact, meaning I have a list of new homes or expected new homes.
You do or you don't?
I do not.
You do not?
Stephen, I've just finished preliminary draft of an ERC count, current and projected, and Dave Caldwell gave me a bunch of it for their properties, so I could take and get that for you to crunch your numbers.
That'd be great. But yeah, so it's, it's basically about four percent, and then again, I've tried to split it up between, you know, the rate increase and an estimate. If we get a bet, some better numbers, that'd be even better, but that's how it's done.
Thank you. It's all, Madam Chair.
And I didn't have anything, and so if there's any additional questions, now'd be the time to ask Stephen.
Very good.
No.
All right, thank you, Stephen.
Wait till next time.
All right, supervisor comments, and I'm going to start down here with Mrs. Flaherty.
All right, I heard, I don't know if it's true, that there's going to be apartments built between Griffin Drive and that bank in that area. There was some inquiring about that, so I...
You mean on Gateway Boulevard next to the old bank?
Yeah, between...
The twelve acres?
That, that is, yeah. Okay, I kind of heard.
News to me. Hadn't heard of it.
I've been asked to build or inquiries on utility service.
It's showing as commercial property, so I don't know how it would go to multifamily apartments.
Exactly. I, I don't know, but I heard that the owner is Gateway LCC 2012.
Yeah, Gateway 2012 LLC.
Right, and they said they want to build apartments.
And if we find out that to be the case, it's going to drastically change our ERC count.
And where did you hear that? From Elle, because I asked her to contact those people because they didn't know their ones, and it looks terrible.
No problem, though.
So don't have...
Now, that's a way to get your information. I never thought of it.
Because it's... Well, it does look terrible. It doesn't look, and I think that's it. That was...
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I only want to say once again that we are making good progress, even though we don't always agree with each other on every single thing. There have been no fisticuffs, no bunnies, and we are moving in a good direction, and I compliment you and the rest of the board.
Well, thank you, and, and we're all working together. I agree with you very well, and we're uncovering rocks, even though we don't know what we find under them. We're cleaning them up. I did not have anything either.
I had just a couple of things. One, I think this deal, they're gone now with Florida Line.
Put the timer on.
Shows an exposure that we've got, and that is, I think we need to come up with a new timesheet accounting system, especially as it relates to water and water meters and MIUs to know over the next year, because then we're going to have to project it after that, how many man-hours is staff, and I mean all staff, is specifically spending on correcting this water meter problem, because I think it's getting out of hand. But anyway, that's, we need new timesheets. Second thing is, is that I am very concerned, like I said, I've preliminarily finished a build-out projection of ERCs in Gateway for potable water and sanitary sewer, and it's about sixty-six hundred, down a little bit from what Tetra Tech calculated in their 2013 report, because our documents indicate that the ERC count is based upon the meter size. We have a game going on here in Gateway, and I'm finally getting my hands on it. We've got people that are getting meters predominantly irrigation, but some potable, like an apartment, Royal Greens. Royal Greens has three hundred and twelve rooftops. They have two three-inch meters that equate to fifty ERCs. Single-family resident Gateway's getting screwed, and that's not the only one. On the irrigation side, it's even worse. Preto has an eight-inch irrigation meter, okay? That's equivalent to eighty ERCs. They have five hundred homes. That's not right. So when we're doing these billings, we've got to go back and adjust what I call our minimum base rate to account for the shenanigans of these communities being allowed to put in these master meters. They're playing games with us, and it's ending up that the single-family residents get subsidized here big time. But the big one I've got, and my biggest concern is, and Kenny's the one who got me into it because he scared the bejesus out of me, is our irrigation system, we this past year were popping eight thousand or right at eight thousand gallon a minute. Man, that's all she, she goes. We don't have any more capacity than that. We can't pump any more than that. My concern is, we're still over a thousand ERCs away from build-out. I am of the opinion that we need to have Tetra Tech do a new engineering study to go back, take these ERCs that we've got, and I'll work with them on getting the numbers because I think they're pretty accurate. We need to examine our water system, our sewer system, and our irrigation system to find out if we need capital facilities to handle them. Good example is right now, everything from Arborwood to Pestoia to Preto and everything in between, Casella and Materita are all coming in to the very north end of that twelve-inch forest main, ten-inch forest main that is serving Stony Brook. That comes all the way up to matches the pump station that's across from Hidden Leaks, which comes all the way up to match the pump station at the Trinity Lutheran Church. I got real doubts that those six, that six and twelve inch line that goes on over to the wastewater treatment plant can handle all this peak flow.
Time out.
In other words...
Time out.
Sorry.
Are you talking pressure or volume or both?
Both, both. We need to know, and here's why we need to know, we have the opportunity to correct this right now. If we need new capital assets, i.e. a parallel forest main, we either got to be pinning that on the developer that's causing it, i.e. Arborwood's going to be coming in, one hundred and thirty-five homes. They're at the tail end of this deal. Is that going to take us over the top?
So wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Help me out. Arborwood's not...
Arborwood Phase Three is in Gateway. It's connected to Gateway. It's part of the Gateway CDD.
Yes.
It's going to come in and come around the back way through Pelican Preserve into Gateway CDD.
Well, see, there's another one. You've just got all kinds of things. I, I was told Arborwood had no connection with Gateway.
Always has been. It was a part of that...
Arborwood Phase Three, tell, if you can point out where it is on the map, because we, there was a, there was a, it's a greener area.
This goes back to that 2011 deal of dropping out part of Pelican Preserve.
There's part of it that does and part of it that doesn't.
Correct. But my point was, our water...
Thank you, sir.
Our water, I'm not, I, I think that we're in pretty good shape as best I could look at on water, but I think... good shape as best I could look at on water, but I think sanitary sewer, force mains, and pump stations are very critical that we need to do. Another good example of this, we've got Worthington that's planning on coming in with five hundred homes down here. If those five hundred homes come by way of what we call the B-one pump station down by Gartner.
Can we just replace that?
We've been doing some repair, and we got more repair to be done. My point is, it can't handle it. We might want to be telling Worthington, guys, you want to go to the wastewater treatment plant or come to Gateway, go catiwampus across the FPL East and tie directly into the plant, and not impact all of our infrastructure all the way to the plant. We need to have somebody crunching the numbers and looking at all of this growth and determining whether or not we need to have more capital assets. And then irrigation, this thousand ERCs or plus coming in here, if we're at the peak right now of eight thousand gallon per minute during dry season, we can't go any higher. We don't have a way to do it. So we got to figure out, before those thousand homes hit here and recreate demand, we got to figure out how we're going to handle it. Perhaps we can go with huge storage tanks, maybe have to build another six million gallon tank to hold the water to knock off the peak. But right now, Kenny scared me. He tells me that we're running at peak already, right now.
I want you to start solving some problems.
I've got, I've got solutions. I'm not licensed as an engineer in Florida, though. So alls I can do is say that we need to have Tetra Tech put a proposal to staff on doing these analysis before we get in trouble.
I want to adjourn this meeting before he comes up with anything else.
See, he's on red. Your five minutes is up, Ed.
Last one. We were advised at the workshop that we should be getting a motion resolution, creating a records coordinator. Where do we, where do we stand on that?
Bring one to the next meeting. We have designated a staff person that takes care of it. We have our forms that I did find out on that.
Yeah, as long as we're clean, but DeCervo told us, if you haven't got this, you're in trouble, because you're violating the law.
I'll report back at the next meeting.
Don't get old. That's all I have in there, Margaret.
All right, thank you, and I believe we have a motion to adjourn, and I will second